Mike gave me, I mean Fred, Fred gave me his, okay. Called to order the special meeting of the city council, Monday, November 26th. Clerk, read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Yep.
Counselor Metuski. Counselor McKinnon. Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Simonelli. President Napolitano.
Here.
Seven members present, we do have a quorum, Mr. President.
If you plan, please stand and salute the fa- flag.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hopefully, that's not a sign of things to come.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick on the person.
Before, if I could, I just want to announce that Counselor McKinnon had called in, he's not feeling well, he won't be here this evening. Counselor DeFlorio?
I recommend that everybody talk into the mics, because if you're watching these meetings at home, you could absolutely hear what, not one question, you can't hear what people are saying, and sometimes you can't even answer, you can't even hear the answers. So, it's, it's really disturbing when you're trying to watch a meeting and you can't hear anything. On, like on my end, when I was watching the meeting, the last meeting that you had, the administrative affairs meeting, I couldn't hear half the questions. So, my recommendation is, if you don't mind, everybody please speak into the mic.
If you mind, speak directly into your microphones, so the public can hear what's going on. Clerk, read the first item on the agenda.
Item number one of the special meeting. As it be it as offered by the Counselor Peter Napolitano, as President, be it ordered by the city council of the city of Everett, Massachusetts as follows, that the city of Everett hereby adopts a 25 percent residential exemption for the annual tax levy.
Thank you, personal, Ms. Clerk, if you'll please note Counselor McLaughlin is here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Someone make a motion?
Invite the guests up to give us a presentation?
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it? Okay, for record, Counselor Simonelli is also here this evening?
Thank you.
Okay. If you please introduce yourselves for the record.
Bill Hart, Chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Bernard Deveraux Assessor?
Thank you.
Bernard Deveraux Assessor?
Eric Demas CFO.
Bill Hart, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. Good evening, everybody, as you know, the annual trek to the city council by the Board of Assessors and members of the financial team are here upon us again this November. We're here tonight, as you know, on your piece of business, on the residential exemption, oh, excuse me, on the classification hearing, which we are going to conduct this evening. But for the purposes of our presentation tonight, I'd like to give an opportunity of our new full-time assessor, Bernie Deveraux, sitting to my left, to do what normally I have done over the past many years, and go through the presentation which you have in front of you. I do think we're supposed to have an overhead as well. Bernie has been with us two and a half years, and most recently, in the past six months, has assumed the full-time role of assessor at the retirement of Pam Davis, our long-term assessor here. So, with that, I'm here to answer any specific questions and point out anything that may need clarification, but I'm going to turn the mic over to BJ, as we call him here in the office, to go through the presentation.
And actually, if I may, I just want to interject something, just so that we're all clear on the numbers that are being presented before you. All of the numbers tonight, for the purpose of this hearing, are presuming to, well, they're, you have two orders on you for city council. One is for the use of $4 million in free cash to offset and mitigate the 2019 tax levy. That has been factored into this presentation. So, should that not happen, it will have an impact on, on the rates themselves, at about approximately 10 cents per million dollars. So, I just want to make sure that you understood that what's before you would assume the use of that 4 million. There's also another order before you at tonight's city council meeting. That is for the use of 650,000 of free cash from water sewer. Regardless of whether you vote to use that as a funding source, it won't have an impact on this tax rate hearing. It's unlike the general fund free cash that was certified to be used for the tax levy. So that you also have a little bit of context, because this is the first time I've had the chance to talk to the board since the Department of Revenue has certified our free cash. For this fiscal year, the Department of Revenue certified our general fund free cash at $9,995,301. And for the enterprise fund, water and sewer, it was $3,599,994. Very healthy surpluses in both.
Okay, as I'm sure you. I did provide one to, to everyone, I thought. I have extras if we need them. Whenever you're ready.
Excuse me, wait a second, but Stephen, a quick, quick question. You said there was a, a positive in the enterprise fund, a plus?
Yes.
And that's the water and sewer thing, right?
It is, it is the water and sewer free cash. So, because we operate a separate enterprise fund, that water sewer is no longer a component of the general fund.
Yep.
Your general fund and any enterprise funds, those, your free cash for each of those funds are calculated independently. Your water sewer revenue, your water sewer expenses, all stay in the enterprise fund. Your general fund that encompasses nearly everything else, other than your special revenue or other revolving funds.
So, with the excess of money in the enterprise fund, plus the amount of expenses that's taken out of the enterprise fund, we're looking at charging about $10 million extra a year, we have all these people on the payroll in the enterprise fund, right? We do have expenses on the enterprise fund, right?
All of the expenses to operate water and sewer are maintained in the enterprise fund, that's correct.
And what are the expenses that we, that the city occurred, that the city has, like buying trucks and all the stuff through the enterprise fund?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but what I can tell you is that we are an MWRA community.
Yep.
So, we purchase our water. And when we purchase our water, we are, based upon the amount of water we purchase,
Yep.
we are stuck with the rates
Sure.
for the MWRA.
But we have to.
And they charge sewer as well, and those.
But we have to add something to that, to pay for our expenses, because we have probably 10, 15 people that work in that department, right?
We do. Yep, so we do have labor, you do have capital costs, and our other large expense in the water sewers are debt service. So, all of the infrastructure improvements, like one of the recent capital improvements in the water sewers, the lead service removal program that's going throughout the city. So, if, if I would categorize it into three expenditures, our water sewer, our rates that we actually get charged by the MWRA are a huge percentage of the overall budget, one of which the city has no control over.
Yep.
Unless we were trying to seek our water sewer, or our water service from another area.
Well, I understand that part of the, the water and sewage expense, but
Then our debt and then our operating.
the enterprise may add another third on top of that to the city, they're paying on top of, it's just another tax, is what it is. That's what it is, I mean, you know.
Sure, it's a user fee, but yeah.
It's a user fee, but it's also the water sewer we expect to pay for, but the additional stuff which we didn't, we passed yet, the private fund, you know, shame on us at the time we did it, that extra money, people pay in their water and sewage bills.
Councilman, I'm going to stop you there only because.
Okay, good, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
I didn't recognize you, but I did allow you to ask your questions.
Okay.
We need to get this presentation on, and please hold your question, any other questions till after the presentation.
Thank you. Is this microphone?
Yes.
Okay. The purpose of this hearing tonight is to allow the council to decide if they want to vote for shift. It would put more of a tax burden on the commercial industrial property, personal property class versus the residential class. It doesn't change the tax levy for the community, it simply determines the share borne by each class. That's been pretty typical here for the number of years in Everett. A few years ago, it went up from 0.2 to 0.25, so. Our properties have all been, values have all been certified by DOR, we do, we will, they will be recertified again as more of a technical measure. And it's up to you folks, obviously, just to decide if, you know, if you want, if you want the, the shift, and also if you want the residential exemption, which obviously has been something that's been accepted here in Everett for quite some time. If you did not vote for the shift, the single rate would be $20.21 across the board for residential and commercial. In a city like Everett with a large commercial industrial base, most, most cities in a similar circumstance do have, they do shift, they do have a split rate. It's not an effective tool in a community that's mostly residential. It, it doesn't, doesn't make much of a difference. Of the four classes of property, the real estate, the residential, commercial, industrial, are all up in double-digit in value, and the personal property was, was up about a little over 3.5 percent. The, the levy limit was calculated by taking the, the approved budget figure of, well, the approved budget figure of levy, for the levy is a little over 110 million. And that's up approximately 8 percent from FY18. The city's able to raise up to 136 million, and that's primarily based on the growth that's been captured from the casino, based on its value on 1118. We're seeing the commercial industrial values starting to come up significantly here, in the commercial triangle, in the industrial zone. A lot of the industrial uses are being pushed out of communities like Cambridge and Somerville. Those use, a lot of those uses are dependent on being close to Boston, and as such, communities like Everett and Chelsea are benefiting from, from that.
And, and just to add, about 10 years ago, and I get some of the information from Mr. Hart as to when exactly it happened, the city saw a shift from the commercial industrial being stagnant, or actually the values going down, and it had a negative impact on the residential side. With all of the new growth that's going on, not just through the resort, but for the value of property, I mean, we're seeing sometimes, you know, an acre of land going for $2 million now. So, what you, what, what's now actually happening is, it's actually shifting back. So, your commercial industrial is now growing, even though residential's growing at a large, a significant rate, your commercial industrial is now significantly taking off, because we're seeing the values of those properties significantly increase. Everything right now is really being driven by land, it's the one thing you can't create. The land values, we're seeing commercial industrial now, we, we thought we were going to see it last year, we said we're not quite seeing them, this is the year we're realizing that. So, more of that shift is now going to the commercial industrial. So, it's going back to more historically what it was over a decade ago.
The, the levy limit calculations, the 2018 levy limit was 110,457,000. We're able to increase that by 2.5 percent by, by law, that's where proposition 2.5 comes from. Onto that, we're able to add new growth, which, again, a large portion of this is, is the casino. That, that was 23 million, 23 and a half million, a little bit more. That brings the levy limit to 136,743,000.
And, and just to add, to put some of this into perspective, one of the things I had talked about for long-term financial planning for the city is our tax levy utilization. You know, how much capacity do we have, where are we in respect to the limit? You know, I, when the bond rating agencies take a look at this, you know, one of the things they take a look at, just like they do personally, is let's say you have a credit card balance, or, or limit of $10,000, but yet you're running a balance of $9,500, where you only have, so you're 95 percent utilized on what your capacity is. It's going to have an impact on your rating. And likewise, for a municipality, the same thing with your levy limit. So, the fact that, you know, we have a budgeted levy limit of 110, but we now have an ex, we now have an actual levy limit of 136, it shows, it, it shows that we have flexibility. So, in five to 10 years, should there be an issue arise where something unexpected happens, we, we now have that increased capacity we were able to capture.
The, in terms of the shift, at 1.75, would be requesting that you vote a minimum residential factor of .5395. That actually equates to a, a shift of slightly less than 1.75. It's about one-half of 1 percent less, it's 1.74542. That's just kind of how the math worked on that. You can see the, the columns comparing the FY18 values and taxes versus the FY19 values and taxes. Those are straight without the residential exemption, and down below, we've taken those same figures with the fiscal 18 residential exemption and the proposed fiscal 19 residential exemption at .25. And you can compare those, you see those are some pretty modest increases in the single two and, and three family categories.
Those range from 2 to 7 percent.
The, on the commercial industrial, personal property impact, that's where you're seeing more of the, of the jump due to, in, in taxes, due to the slight increase in the rate, as well as the increased values, and the, the commercial class bearing more of the, of the burden this year, as opposed to prior years.
Again, it's that shift we were talking about.
The residential exemption was calculated based on the entire, the, the value for the entire residential class. There are 850, 8,551 parcels in total in that class, with an average residential property value of 474,236. At the 25 percent, that leaves a residential exemption of 118,559 off the assessed value. The total, currently, the total number of qualifying parcels are 4,087. By law, we'll continue to accept those residential exemptions until April 1st. So, any of those will come out of our overlay account. So that, we, we subtract that value out, and that gives us a net value for the class of a little over 3.5 billion. We divide that by the residential burden of the levy, and that's, we come to a residential tax rate of 1238 for the residential class, which is a pretty good decline from the prior year in, in rate.
So, just to recap, the two things that we need a vote on by the city council tonight are the residential exemption and the shift. So, I wanted to be sure that, before we entertain questions, that those are the two things that we're asking for a vote on this evening in this public hearing.
And again, and again, just to reiterate, the, the shift of .5395, that equates to a, one, excuse me, that equates to a shift of 1.74542, slightly less than the 1.75. We kept it at 1.75 in the report for, just to keep the presentation a little cleaner.
But in your vote, if you could actually specify the exact decimal place, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Before we have any, before we vote or ask questions, we do need to open up public hearing for each, each item?
Open public hearing for item number one?
Okay, if we excuse the customer, thanks.
We have, we have questions.
They'll come back after the, after the public hearing's open. All right, all in favor opening the public hearing, all in, clerk?
Yeah, to open it is fine.
Fine, okay, all in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it? Okay, this is regarding the, the city of Everett adopts a 25 percent residential exemption for the annual tax levy. I'll ask three times if anyone in the audience is in favor. And I'll ask three times, anybody who's opposed? Is anybody in favor of item number one? Is anyone in favor of item number one? Is anyone in favor of item number one? Close that portion of the public hearing. Is anybody against item number one? Is anyone against item number one? Is anyone against item number one? Seeing as there is none, close that portion.
Motion.
Motion to close public hearing, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it?
Make a motion to open public hearing for item number two.
He hasn't been read yet.
I would, yep, I would vote on number one, since it's before you.
Yeah. Number one, second.
We have a motion favorable action on, on number one, it's been seconded.
But what if we have questions?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to open that up to the floor right now, Councilman DeFlory, McLaughlin, and then Delasol.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In regards to the values of the homes, single family, two-family, three-family, I see that you, you take an average, and I understand that average, but I find that the houses are selling so much higher. How do you arrive at that average? Like, when I see the papers and I see what the houses are really selling for, how are you arriving at these averages, I see them very low.
These, these values, well, the, the, the values are as of 1118, so they developed using sales from 11, through the calendar year 2017.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a market adjusted cost approach we use. You know, and again, the market adjustment comes out of the sales that are happening in the community. You know, the twos, there's always going to be properties that people look at, and maybe it's better maintained than another property, and they're willing to pay a premium for it, or due to location, or due, you know, they want extra off-street parking, there's, there's lots of different reasons why people are, are going to pay things, pay, pay what they paid for real estate. And real estate's an emotional decision, when they, when most people purchase it. But the, the average, the average single, single family we have is, is a 388,279. So, the, the pictures, the, these were, these were specific examples in the presentation, those weren't averages of the, of the all. So, that's what, for FY, FY19, that's the average single family, uh, single family value, it's 388,279.
Okay, the other question I have is, based on this $10 million on 995,301, uh, free cash certified, 4 million is going to go towards the taxes, where is the difference going? You're dividing it into the stabilization?
Underneath, underneath city policy, once it's certified and we set the tax rate, you'll be seeing three additional orders that'll come before the board per, per, per ordinance. And that would be to set 50 percent aside, broken down as a percentage into three various stabilizations. There are three different percentages that are used, a 25.
I'm not concerned about the percentage, I want to know, and the reason why I'm asking that is because you put a portion into the water enterprise, is that correct?
No.
You don't, that, that was my question. Because I'm saying, if we already have 3.5 million in there, I don't think that we should be adding anymore.
No, and you, you absolutely will not. So, as required by statute, any free cash remaining in the water sewer, just as it has in the past, remains in water sewer, and actually has, will stay in water sewer. It can only be used to mitigate rates, mitigate potential rate increases, or capital, or debt, or what have you. The general fund free cash, though, that actually stays in the general fund unless there's a vote by city council. Now, per charter, 50 percent of the free cash, once we set the tax rate, will go into three various stabilization accounts. There are guidelines that the city has accepted, but if you recall, last year, those percentages can be tweaked by city council at the time in which you vote. So, anything remaining, that 50 percent, you'll be seeing in the next few weeks, coming before you to put aside and put back into those stabilization accounts.
Okay.
Which, again, I'm going to recommend, only because the city has depleted those stabilization accounts over the last couple of years. And I do think it's prudent that we begin to start building those back up, to the levels that they were at.
I also went in the water enterprise, I didn't remember that, that's why I asked that question, so.
Water sewer stays in the water sewer, it belongs to the, the users, the rate payers.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President, Mr. President, through to our invited guest. I'm really pleased to hear the numbers that you reported, and Steve, it's good work on your behalf, because we've heard in the recent reports and the news that the city may be broke, could be broke, it's obviously not, so it's really good to hear that we're in good shape financially.
And, and if I can, just to add, I'm not a decision maker.
Absolutely.
I'm just an advisor, so I, I think the position that the city's in belongs, that, thank you, belongs to the mayor, to the city council, and us finance as a team, it's, it's a collective issue. But I'm in advisory role, and you guys make the decisions, but yes, the city is financially, financially strong, and, and very pleased to where we are, and the city's only going to continue to get stronger. We're just in some unchartered waters right now, given the fact that we have the largest construction project going on in the eastern seaboard, right here in our city. It's having an impact on our valuations, it, things are all over the board. Last year, we were seeing double-digit increases on single family to the, the further you got up to the multis. This year, we're seeing our single families actually slowing down a little bit in their growth, and we're seeing the two families, the three families rising faster. This is the first year we're actually seeing a shift from the residential values slowing in the growth to the commercial industrial. So, I, I think your business owners are going to feel it a little bit more this year, given the fact that 10 years ago, the shift went the other way. You know, they're, they're a little bit of growing pains, but they're all very positive as to the direction where the city's going. And I, I just hope that we can continue the city moving in that positive direction.
That's definitely some of the questions that I have.
That's definitely some of the questions that I have tonight, because we've heard for years-
If I could, if I could from the chair, just remind the membership that by law, we're required to have both these public hearings done before seven o'clock. So I would ask that you keep your general statements, uh, to yourself at this point, uh, unless you have a relevant question that, that is affecting your ability to vote, uh, there's a motion on the floor for favorable action, okay? In two minutes, we're gonna be in violation of, of open meeting law because we have not started the second public hearing, which is part of this same meeting here. So keep that in mind. Okay?
I do, I do respect that, Mr. President, it concerns me that we have such a time-
Okay, just, if you have a question, ask it.
I do.
If not, let's move on.
We, what would have, how are we getting to the point where we're raising taxes again this year, Mr. Demus? I'm just a little uncertainty of, I thought taxes would be balanced off at this point at a rate of level. Are we gonna continue to see year after year taxes increase? And we thought when we brought the casino in, the deal was taxes would lower or balance off.
When, when the casino becomes operational, that's when it's gonna balance off. You know, these are the three years we were saying that we're gonna be the most challenging, and this year prior, the, the year just prior to the casino opening was gonna be our most challenging from a taxing standpoint. We're now gonna see that moving forward, balancing off, if not significantly improving, when all of that additional revenue starts coming into the city.
So twenty-twenty, you think you'll see it balance off?
Yes, I absolutely do.
Make a motion, we lay this on the table?
Second.
Aye.
Item number two, Mr. President, is a order that the city of Everett hereby accepts a minimal, minimal, minimum residential factor for the annual tax levy.
Open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to open public hearing, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Last three times, anyone in favor?
President, your, uh, mic's not on.
I'm gonna ask three times, is anyone in favor of item number two, except the minimal fa- uh, residential factor? And then I'll ask three times, and if there's anyone opposed. Is anyone in favor of item, of item number two? Is anyone in favor of item number two? Is anyone in favor of item number two? See, there's none. Anybody opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two?
Motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We got it in just under the clock. Okay, um-
Could we postpone both these items to our next meeting?
Oh, in a few minutes? Delay them over until the, the start of next meeting? Can we do that?
I mean, legally on my end, you can, but I'm, I'm, I'm-
I mean, I have no pro- I have no issues, uh, voting on this, we're only accepting the, uh, residential taxes, the twenty-five percent residential taxes and the minimum residential, so I have no issue.
Well, there's still, there's still a member has questions on the floor, and not trying to take that opportunity away from them.
No, I, I don't wanna take that away either.
It's just that we need it too for time services.
There are only, uh, a question, if you can push the other one a little bit, I can't stop the other one early, there'll be ten staff teammates waiting.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
We would like to ask a couple of questions as long as it's in the time we may, uh, and we-
So right now, as it stands right now, item number one is, is being held over. Again, you need to reopen it. Item number two is before you, okay? And there's no motions on item number two. We've completed the public hearing.
Um, and, and I believe just, I just wanna make sure it's the favorable action as the one-point-seven-five shift, correct, uh, Mr. Demus? Is this the piece that, item number two?
No, item number, no, it's item number one. We're on item number two, so item number two is as is.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I did it right.
Okay. No, we still have item two in front of us.
You can vote on two if you-
We can take two first, okay? So is a motion right now for, uh, is there a motion for item number two? Favorable action, second, okay? Questions? Clerk will read the roll.
Okay, item number two, this is on the minimum residential factor. Favorable action.
Exemption.
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 Am I reading the-
No, on the agenda, it's minimal residential factor, Mr. Clerk. Okay, item number two is that the, the city of Everett accepts, everybody accepts a minimal residential factor for the annual tax levy.
As posted, item one is the exemption, item two is the factor, we're on item two, we skipped over one.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure with a-
The, the minimum residential factor is point five-three-nine-five, which equates to a shift of one-point-seven-four-five-four-two.
So this is the one that we said that we had to say at one-point-seven-five?
Yes, yep.
So that, it is item two. I just wanted to make sure we did it correctly.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, just so you know, favorable action as the one-point-seven-five split.
They're, they're in a, sorry, they're in a different order than I meant.
I know, they're a different one, I, that's why I just wanna double check.
I didn't have the agenda.
Because it's important. All right. Ready for me, Mr. President?
I guess I'll say it.
Okay. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasol?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed item number two.
Take item one from the table? We have a motion, take item one, it's second, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it? Councilman, uh, Delasol, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. I notice a lot of numbers up here, uh, more for, people at home watching this, I know what's on here. How much is the taxes going up for a, a single family?
Uh, single family is going up approximately, again, on average, every house is different, um, on average, based on the number three and five.
On average, single families are about five percent, two, uh, two families are about two percent, three families and up are about seven percent. So it really depends on where you are in the city.
Yes. After the exemption?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, you have a motion before us for favorable action, it's been seconded. Counselor Marchese.
Seeing this, uh, the type of facility, convenience store, these little stores will be going up that, that much and-
This, this was actually a, a national chain convenience store.
Yep.
It's not like a, uh, uh-
Do we have one of them, a national chain?
Yeah, we've, we've got Seven-Elevens, um-
So they're, they're gonna be going up to eight thousand dollars in taxes? Because most of the people who don't have cars, go shop, they're expensive already, and we also have fast food like McDonald's, it's gonna be going up thirteen thousand in taxes?
Yeah, I, I, again, it's all based on our land values and right now, what we've been seeing, um, through one-one-eighteen, you, you get an acre of land that's going for roughly two million dollars.
Yeah, but that's down to one particular area.
What's that?
That's in one particular area, and also what the zoning changes we've made, that's why there's an increase.
Part of it, yes.
But to be clear, the tax rate for the homeowner, the rate has gone down, the values are gone up. So when you look across the city and you look at values, the values of our homes and our businesses have all risen in the previous calendar year. And that's what I think some folks, uh, to your point, Counselor DeFlorio, you look at the newspaper, you see high numbers, we're looking at a year ago. Regardless, it's still went up, values are up. You know, when you look at the houses that have been sold and the businesses that are sold, we're selling an acre of land, as, as Mr. Demus said, about two million dollars. Two years ago, we weren't selling an acre of land for two million dollars in Everett. So, you know, with, with growth and prosperity comes value changes and, uh, as much as we strive to bring the rate down per thousand and to shift some of the burden away from the taxpayer, the residential taxpayer, and to give them that exemption, uh, and to still provide the services that we do in this community, there's, there's a cost to that, and we're trying to minimize that. But it's safe to say, our values in Everett are strong, very strong.
Second question. I know somebody gets the brunt of all this, which happens to be the people who have landlords, like myself, and I try to provide affordable housing, I'm probably the cheapest landlord in the city of Everett. So now, I don't know what this bump is gonna be, but somebody's gonna absorb it. So you can't have affordable housing, why am we talking about affordable housing when you're gonna tax the heck out of the people who provide the affordable housing? So that's an issue. It's not an issue for me, it's an issue for my tenants. Because I know, somebody gets the, that twenty-five percent gets eaten up by somebody and gets shifted up to the absentee landlords or whatever, we're considering the city.
Correct.
But that's it.
Absolutely.
Correct. Counsel McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President, through you. Big cloud overhanging the city. Wind Resorts, if God forbid, the license were to be pulled, there's still an investigation going on. What does that mean for our tax rate? If our taxes are going up right now with so much money coming into the city coffers, what would happen if they, if they were kicked out of the city tomorrow, or next week, or next year?
Councilman, is this relevant to the twenty-five percent residential exemption?
It is, because I need, I need to understand where we're taking this vote tonight, what would mean for the forecast for the future of our city. We're making a decision offer tonight, but for the real future of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not looking at the overall picture, I'm asking is, the questions are specific to the relevant, adopting the twenty-five percent residential exception?
Absolutely, because we may wanna shift the, the twenty-five percent to a, to a different rate, if, if the, if it's not as strong potentially in the future. We may wanna, we may wanna go to a different rate, at twenty-five to twenty, or fifteen, or whatever that number may, may look like, if they've looked at that.
Proceed with your question.
Have you, has anybody dissected that and broken that down? Twenty-five percent is great when you have a lot of cash coming into the city and you're able to do so. But if that changed tomorrow-
Well, it, it actually doesn't change the levy, because I think to Counselor Marchese's standpoint, when you take that twenty-five percent, it stays in the residential section. So it doesn't shift more to the commercial industrial. So what happens is, is when you have parcels of land that aren't eligible for that, it gets put onto all of the other, um, pieces of property where you have somebody that's renting or, um, owns two pieces of property and lives in one. So it all stays with residential. As far as whether or not, um, if we've looked into exactly what would happen, um, if something like, uh, i- if Wind Resorts didn't open, have not looked into that significantly, but what I can tell you is it wouldn't, there would be more, more of an impact for you to change the levy and actually cut costs. It would have less of an impact talking about, um, what percentage you're gonna use for a residential exemption. Because you need to lo- you would need to lower that levy. Because at the end of the day, the residential portion of the levy doesn't change, you're still raising that among the residential parcels.
But, Mr. Demus, and I'll do expect we're gonna end it here. People at home don't care what the levy is, they care about what they're paying out of their pocket for taxes. Most people aren't planning on selling their home, hopefully, in the city. So they don't really care what their assessment and their levy, what their assessment is, because they're not looking to sell. If they're looking to sell, then that never is, is significantly important. If they're not, then they care about what they're paying out of their pocket annually. And we're seeing the taxes increasing again tonight, and could potentially be a, a bombshell in the making, if things that go-
I'm not talking valuation, um, I'm talking levy. Your levy is the city's tax bill. You would have to reduce the levy, the tax bill. And that, that's your budget.
By, by law, the, the, that property would need to be taxed at its fair market value as of January first. The value of that property isn't gonna drop to zero.
But is it fair to say, our acre of land wouldn't be selling for two million dollars in the city of Everett at that point?
It, it could, it could impact some ancillary development, it could, it could, yeah.
Let's be realistic, it would. I'm just concerned that we're putting too much of our future of our city on one development. We heard the mayor quoted in the Boston meeting here this week, that that's what's happening, and I'm very concerned by that statement. And again, we're showing it tonight. I'm just concerned that if this bombshell were to happen, what does our city look like?
Then we would talk, be talking about lowering the actual tax levy, the actual overall city bill.
Customer, I have another speaker, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guests. Just wanna point out two things. One, on the twenty-five percent residential exemption, roughly fifty percent of the residential partial, uh, parcels will benefit from this. So those are owner occupied, the other fifty percent are non-owner occupied. And the other thing is, I'm glad to see that we have the surplus of free cash, get certified just under ten million dollars. But this body should not lose sight of the fact that that means that's ten million dollars that we raised, even though we're under the levy cap, it's ten million dollars more that we raised from the taxpayers than we needed to. We gotta keep this in mind all the time. I appreciate your efforts, it's the only comments I have.
Thank you. Okay, motion before you is for favorable action, it's been seconded.
Would you like this?
Excuse the customary thanks. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasol?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin? Counselor Simonelli? President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, you have passed item number one.
You passed item number one? Okay. Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it? With that, gonna motion to open the, uh, the regular meeting of the city council. Again, um, we, clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yep.
Counselor Delasol?
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Here.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Here.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine members, president, two absent, we have a quorum, so president-
Okay, uh, we've already, we've already, uh, slid the flag, so suspend that. I think emotional public participation? Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
I have some speakers. Yes, I do.
Okay, if you go down the list.
There are, uh, four speakers. They're all, um, part of the administration, so maybe they'd like to come up together and speak as one group. Uh, they are, um, Frank Nuzzo from Code Enforcement, James Soper, ISD Director, Code Enforcement Director, um, Tony Colley, Fire Chief, and Stephen Maisy, the Police Chief. The four of them are the speakers, Mr. President.
And these are on for public participation, are, are you here for agenda items?
They are on for public participation and as for items, they sound acceptable. Um, it was Mr. Nuzzo was first-
Starts off, you have a seat?
Yeah, I think they won.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you introduce, you, you say your name for the record?
Fire Chief Anthony Colley.
Uh, this is for public participation, um, chief, so this is where you can say whatever This is for public participation, chief, so this is where you can say whatever you like. There's no response from the council.
Okay, I'm speaking on the, item on tonight's agenda, about the occupancy permit. I recently wrote an op-ed, I don't know if any of the members had an opportunity to read it, about the concerns I have with changing the wording in this. This is an extremely important ordinance, and I, I ask everybody to, to take careful consideration to not change this. We, we've had a really bad issue in this city with illegal apartments, with landlords not doing what's right by their tenants, by tenants, once they get into a unit, destroying it and therefore blaming the landlords. A lot of times, my fire prevention office was called in to referee these fights after it had already gone on. It was very hard for us to figure out what had, what had taken place. Along came the occupancy permits, and that literally solved our problems. We were getting into these units early, ensuring the safety of the tenants, and we were ensuring the tenants, we're going to treat these landlords' properties correctly as they live there. I, I don't really understand the thought process in changing this. I don't think it's the way to go as far as the city's concerned, to make it an optional thing. I don't think landlords will call us if they're not mandated by our ordinance to do so. Surrounding communities all make it mandatory, and, and they have not had any problems. I will say, my fire prevention office has never received a complaint from a landlord about this. And tenants feel safer because, you know, our members come out with ISD and look at these properties.
Thank you, Chief.
So, the next person would be Mr. Sooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Jim Sooper. I'm the Director of Inspection Services for the beautiful city of Everett. And my aim is to keep it beautiful and safe, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I think it's very important that we don't take this ordinance change lightly. There is in place a change to make this voluntary. And voluntary means that if it's going to cost me any money, if it's going to cost me any time, people are going to be deterred from doing this. This habitability, and I know the chief referred to his occupancy, it's really habitability. And this habitability is something that a landlord pays $25 for and gets an expert inspector that's been trained on sanitation laws from the state of Massachusetts. That inspector goes into that empty unit and makes sure that we have carbon monoxide detectors, we have smoke detectors where they're supposed to be, we have locks on the doors, they have heat, they have hot water, they have a comfortable, safe, living environment, okay? Now, that's what we all expect, and that's, I think, what we all want. I think it's contrary to public safety to have this become voluntary, in which participation will dwindle. We won't get into these units, we won't find these illegal apartments that come up on a regular basis. We have an application form, and, and this application form is very easy. Again, $25. We check the legal use of the building before our inspectors go out there. So, if we have it as a two-family and we show up and there's a basement apartment, we have good knowledge that we have an illegal apartment, and we have to, we have to take care of that. We can't walk by that. We also have a residence and business emergency contact information. So, when we go into that apartment, we have the, the owner's name and contact information, as well as the tenant's information. And that information goes to the fire department and the police department. So, if there's an overdose, if there's a crime, if there's something going on in the neighborhood, they have this information that we've gotten for them. Very important. These, these are minimal safety that includes basically the common areas in the place that you're living in as a tenant. Part of the proposed ordinance that was voted and reconsidered, or voted down and reconsidered, and did I take exception with is, is along with the "may" request, the legal use. There's also, it says, "No other unit or area not in common with the tenant shall be inspected without property owner approval." So, here we are, in a three-family, inspecting the third unit, we walk by the first unit, we hear an alarm going off, or the tenant just comes out and says, "Hi, how you doing? Can you come in and look at my ceiling in my bathroom? It's falling down from the plumbing up above?" And under this, as if you, as you've adopted or unadopted and is up for reconsideration tonight, is the fact that we'd have to ask the property owner for approval to go in there, when the tenant has every right to ask us to enter that apartment and check out this, this issue. Now, I ran this by legal opinion today in the solicitor's office, okay? And here's, here's what I'm going to read. This is from solicitor's office, and, and you can call the solicitor up here, and hopefully you, you may do that to, to find out. "I understand that there is a draft proposal for further changes to the ordinance that would restrict access to units during a habitability inspection to only those in which the inspectors have the owner's permission. I have sought the advice of the solicitor's office, and that provision is in conflict with state law, which allows an owner or anyone in possession, tenant or renter, of a unit to grant such permission. As such, any such draft would be in conflict with state law." So, I would think that you don't want to be in a position where we're putting, you know, ordinances on the book that I can't enforce, and that potentially just adds to confusion when, when a tenant or a landlord is out there saying, "Hey, we can't get in there because this is on the books," and I'm saying, "We have state law that says we can do this." That tenant has a right to call us in. So, again, I'm here because I feel very strongly about public safety, along with my, my other presenters here tonight. This is very important to this community to make sure that the people who come in and rent these apartments, they have no idea what is safe and what isn't. They don't know about carbon monoxide. They may not know about second means of ignorance. We're here to help them. Please let us do it. Thank you.
Clerk will read the next person on the public transportation list.
I have Chief Maisy.
Speaking on the same item, and I'll, I'll keep a shot. I just want to voice my support for keeping it as it was. Just from our end, we end up getting some information that ends up helping from a public safety standpoint down the road, when people are sometimes victims of potential suspects for notification purposes, et cetera. It gives us up-to-date, good information, accurate information on who's living in a house and who may own a house. Sometimes it's a matter of contacting a property owner and dealing with a tenant issue, or and vice versa, dealing with a, helping a tenant deal with a property owner. So, we, we, we support it as it was. Okay? Thank you.
And the final speaker is Mr. Nozo.
It'll be hard to not repeat what you've just heard, but I have to concur with the previous speakers. Habitability checks are really a life safety issue. Code enforcement performed over 250 of them last year. We're on pace to probably do that again this year. Habitability checks not only protect the homeowner, but it protects the occupants. It protects our firemen, our policemen that may be called into these properties on an emergency basis. So, I strongly would ask you to please keep the ordinance intact. It's to protect the citizens of Everett, and unfortunately, I think, any change that is proposed here, the only person that it might help is the absentee landlords who we have problems with daily. So, again, I, I hope you will look at it as a public safety issue and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Spend rules, take item number three.
Just, just so you know, we do have somebody on item number one. I know, either whichever one you want to take, but there's a woman here for an appointment on number one, too, so whatever you like. Yeah, it's up to you. I just wanted to let you know.
Do all the points, don't they?
Clerk will read item number one.
Item number one. Mr. President, there's an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President, the appointment of Carol De La Russo to the city, to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring November 30th, 2021.
Mr. President, spend rule 20 for the balance of the evening.
Second, a motion to suspend rule 20 for the balance of the evening. It's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Favorable action?
Second. Motion favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
She is. Ask her to stand.
Carol, could you please stand?
So they know. So, Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Congratulations.
Mr. President.
Could you please come forward?
If, if you could come forward, I'll swear you in now. How are you?
Good morning.
Okay. I'm going to have to raise your hand here, and you're going to repeat after I say aye, you're going to say your name. Okay? We'll go nice and slow. Aye.
Carol De La Russo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Council on Aging.
As a member of the Council on Aging.
For the city of Everett.
For the city of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to my rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordances and charter.
Ordances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
The city of Everett.
The state of Massachusetts.
State of Massachusetts.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
No, just take three.
Spend the rules, take item number three.
We have a motion, take item number three. It's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three, there's an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President, the appointment of Stephen Maisy as Chief of Police for a three-year term expiring November 30th, 2021.
Favorable action, second.
Motion favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief.
Excuse me. While the clerk is getting ready to swear the chief in, is Stephen Alteri in the audience? Thank you.
Chief, you know, you know what you're doing. Yeah, all right. You ready?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye, Stephen A. Maisy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon you.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
For the city of Everett.
For the city of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordances and charter.
Ordances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Stephen A. Maisy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the laws and Constitution.
And support the laws and Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Stephen A. Maisy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
Mr. clerk, is there anybody else on the signing sheet?
Um, yes. Excuse me. There are two sign-in sheets, one is for item 14 and one for item 7. Item 14 is first. President?
Need a motion. Need a motion and second, take item number 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 14.
Item number 14. Mr. President, there's an ordinance offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese to amend by deleting Section 10-27, inspection request before occupancy of Article III, certificate of habitability. This is being reconsidered. The original piece was before you a few weeks ago. It was not to delete, it was amended by changing the word "may" and a few other subsections, a few sentences. That is what's before you, but you can amend it as you wish at this moment.
Councilor Marchese.
Uh, yes, I would, I appreciate the move for reconsideration because this piece was worked on, it was worked on by four members of the committee here, it came out favorably. I don't know what happened between, if you're on a committee, it comes out 4-0, and then you get a vote, you don't get four. But if there's ever an issue with a piece, phone calls appropriate. And at this time, I would like to change it back to the must, that's all, if I could. Is that the proper way of doing it? So, I would like to amend "may" to "must" if I could.
So, yep, you can do so. So, there are, there are a few things. One, you, you would like to bring it back to "must," but you are leaving the other language that you had in there, correct?
The language that, that was done at the committee.
And, and by doing so, you, you are fully allowed to. The only thing is that it would not be for adatement tonight because you are changing the intent of the piece, so we'd have to enroll it again, I would have to publish it again in the newspaper.
Yep.
And then we could add it.
So, it'd be for the next two weeks.
I just wanted to know, explain the process because it's a little different.
Yep.
Because we reconsidered it and we're changing the intent of the piece.
So, the vote tonight would just have been amended.
Would be just amend it and enroll it, and then it would be in two weeks at the 10th. If it passed, we could, I would post in the newspaper, and then it'll be for adatement on the 10th.
Well, let me ask you, could, if we didn't change this today, we laid this piece on the table for two weeks.
Uh-huh.
Then I would like to amend it in two weeks, not particularly tonight.
Well, you can amend it at any point, but, but if you're changing the intent of the piece, my law says that I...
Exactly, but I don't want to call for vote tonight on it. I'd like to amend it. Some of my supporters are here tonight.
You can vote. Yes, so what you could do is vote for the amendment. If that passes, then postpone the piece for two weeks, give people time to absorb that. Then it'd still be for enrollment, though.
Yep. What I would like to do is latest...
I just want to make sure we know.
I would like to make a motion, the latest piece on the table for another two weeks.
Okay, but as, as it is before us, or did you want to make the motion to amend it first?
Well, I'd like to amend it.
So, you're going to do the amendment, and that has to be...
But I don't want the amendment to die here tonight, the end of the piece.
Okay.
Are you following me?
I, I, you can do it either way. I'm just telling you, if you're referring it or postponing it to another meeting, the amendment hasn't happened.
Yes.
So, you're postponing it as-is.
Postponing it as-is, and I will make the amendment at the following.
And then you can make the amendment over there. That's...
Yes.
That is your right.
So, my, if, is it, do I have the right to do this, or there's a person that...
You have the right to make... Nope, no, no, no. It's, it's a piece before you. She made the motion to reconsider at the meeting and refer and postponed it.
I'd like to make a motion, the latest on the table for two weeks. To postpone it for two weeks.
So, yep, you can do so. So there are a few things. One, um, you would like to bring it back to "must," but you are leaving the other language that you had in there, correct?
The language that was done at the committee.
And by doing so, you are fully allowed to. The only thing is that it would not be for adatement tonight because you are changing the intent of the piece. So we'd have to enroll it again. I would have to publish it again in the newspaper.
Yep.
And then we could add it.
So it'd be for next two weeks.
I just wanted to know, explain the process because it's a little different.
Yep.
Because we reconsidered it and we're changing the intent of the piece.
So the vote tonight would just...
Would be just to amend it and enroll it, and then it would be in two weeks at the tenth. If it passed, uh, we could, um, I would post in the newspaper, and then it'll be for adatement on the tenth.
Well, let me ask you. Could, if we didn't change this today, we laid this piece on the table for two weeks.
Uh-huh.
Then I would like to amend it in two weeks, not particularly tonight.
Well, you can amend it at any point, but if you're changing the intent of the piece, my law says that I...
Exactly, but I don't want to call for vote tonight on it. I'd like to amend it. Some of my supporters aren't here tonight.
You can vote. Yes, so what you could do is vote for the amendment. If that passes, then postpone the piece for two weeks, give people time to absorb that. Then it'd still be for enrollment, though.
Yep. What I would like to do is latest...
I just want to make sure we know.
I would like to make a motion, the latest piece on the table for another two weeks.
Okay, but as it is before us, or did you want to make the motion to amend it first?
Well, I'd like to amend it.
So you're going to do the amendment, and that has to be...
But I don't want the amendment to die here tonight, end the piece.
Okay.
Are you following me?
I... You can do it either way. I'm just telling you, if you're referring it or postponing it to another meeting, the amendment hasn't happened.
Yes.
So you're postponing it as-is.
Postponing it as-is, and I will make the amendment at the following.
And then you can make the amendment over there. That's...
Yes.
That is your right.
So, my, if, is it, do I have the right to do this, or does the person have...
You have the right to make... No, 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 no. It's a piece before you. She made the motion to reconsider at the meeting and refer and postponed it.
I'd like to make a motion, the latest on the table for two weeks. To postpone it for two weeks.
Yes.
Does the motion postpone this for two weeks? Is there a second? Okay. On the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I voted against this piece right from the beginning because I really don't want to tie anybody's hands. There are always two sides to every story. The landlord, being homeowners, we understand that sometimes tenants don't always take care of things. Being a tenant with a landlord that's absentee and doesn't care about his property, and we have quite a few of them in the city, and if you walk by their houses, you'll see it. You'll see that these landlords just don't care about their properties. They take their cars and go back to Linfield or Peabody or wherever they live. So I voted against it because I don't want to tie code enforcement's hands for a public safety reason. But I brought this back because there is some language in the piece that is very good. So I would hope that we could all come together to an agreement that we don't tie the Board of Health's hands, we don't tie the building inspector's hands, but we also let the building inspector understand that, you know, if a tenant causes a problem and they call you because there's a hole in that ceiling, well, maybe there wasn't a hole in the ceiling to begin with, but we rented this apartment thirty years ago, and you don't know that. So give the landlord the chance to fix the problem. And I know ninety percent of the time they do. I've dealt with code enforcement, and I've dealt with issues where I have called them, and people do get a chance. So I don't think we should completely kill the piece. Give us some language in there that's good. So let's give the courtesy to the, um, councilor that worked on this all summer. You know, I mean, that's only fear to our colleagues when you work on something that, maybe we don't agree on everything, but let's agree, you know, to something that does work. So I agree with the councilor to postpone it for another two weeks.
Counselor McLaughlin, on the motion to postpone this for two weeks.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. If we were to make the amendment tonight of taking out, striking out the word "must," I mean, from maybe to must, is there significant other changes that potentially we would be looking at in the future?
Counselor MacAsie, I'd like you to answer that.
Yes, actually, there's, I understand the part that Mr. Soper came in about the person complaining about a leak and needing the permission. I think that can be worked into it so it works, but so that they would have the right to go in there. The, this piece is about not being able to bond star on my house.
Absolutely.
You know, we do own the houses. I don't know what other cities do. I'm sure they don't do the extreme, what they're doing here. And I'm sure in Winthrop or Mr. Soper from, they don't do this there. This is, all right, so, you know, I live here with the people in the city of Everett, and there's people making rules and enforcement that don't. So if they don't hear it, they can drive out of here. I have to listen to it. I'm sure you do too.
And I think, to that point, I had voted no previously on this, but after understanding the ordinance, I started to feel a little bit differently because I can, I understand...
We'll change it and keep the safety issues in there, but we just want to give the landlord a little bit of protection so he's not getting whacked with fifteen hundred dollar a day fees and loses houses. I mean, I just read an article that was in the Forbes magazine, how they took a piece of property down on, what you would call it, Street, on Liberty Street. So, okay, allegedly it's a fire alarm. There's no fire alarm, but they still had the right to go into the place. That's not right.
And that's why I think we can't kill this piece altogether.
Exactly. It could be worked on.
I just wanted to know if any other...
All right, we'll stop all cross debate at this point.
Thank you, that's all.
The motion is postpone it, and the response's intent is to make modifications based on the information that was presented to them this evening. And I think any further debate at this point until those changes or amendments are before us is kind of a moot point. So right now, the motion is postpone this for two weeks. Been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. And there's one more item.
Item number seven.
Item number seven.
Spend the rules, take item number seven.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number seven.
Item number seven. There's a petition offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano, as President, that the Everett City Council, our Crown Castle NGE LLC, to replace seven existing forty-eight inch by eight-point-one-six inch antennas with new forty-eight by eighteen inch antennas, and the existing shrouds with new shrouds at several locations, which are attached herein.
Mr. President...
Councilman DeFlorio.
Could we please invite the guests up?
Inviting the guests from Crown Castle?
Yep.
Okay.
The Crown Castle, yes.
So seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please have a seat and introduce yourself for the...
We have the information from the last meeting, yes.
Could you state your names for the record, please?
Good evening, councilmembers. Amanda Cornwall.
If you could please speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
You can pull it to, yeah.
Amanda Cornwall, government relations specialist for Crown Castle.
I'm Joe Shannon with Crown Castle.
Chris Cohen, a government relations consultant with Crown Castle.
Okay.
Councilman DeFlorio.
Since you were here the last time, I understand that these pieces are going to be a little taller, but from my understanding, you're not going to have as many. My question is, how many are you going to have, and as far as the noise goes? Because you do have some in the areas already, from what I understood. And I really haven't gotten any complaints on the noise. So my concern is, I understand that these are a little larger. They're taller. Is that correct? So...
They're slightly wider.
Wider.
Yes, they'll remain the same height. And we currently have, I believe it's twenty-one or twenty-two existing facilities in the city.
Right.
We are looking to upgrade seven of them.
So you're going to go down to seven? You're not going to have twenty-one of them, or only upgrading seven of them?
We're only upgrading seven. The other ones will remain.
The other ones will remain. And in the, what's going in these seven that you're upgrading? Same thing? Is it going to...
Yes, it's, so the equipment consists of a pole-top antenna and an equipment shroud that's mounted on the side, and that's what we'll be upgrading. The shroud will be slightly larger, and the antenna will be slightly wider.
The purpose of this is, the purpose is to, we're adding a second carrier. So right now, most deployments for small cells across the city are going to be one carrier on one pole. Crown Castle's model for a telecommunications company is a shared infrastructure model. So what we try to do is put more than one carrier on each pole. We think it's better for, we think it's better for the city. It's a better way to deploy wireless infrastructure because the alternative is, it's going to be one carrier on each pole across the city.
Okay, but the point we have, the problem we have in the city, and we've had for years, is that when National Grid comes out to change that pole, they put an extra pole up because companies are not coming, whether it's Comcast or Verizon, they're not coming to remove their wires. Are you going to be responsible for all those wires?
Double, so we can't do all the wires. And we completely understand the double-pole problem across the city. It's a city that affects many, you know, cities across the country. What, the reason it's part of a problem is because we can't touch anybody else's wire. So that's kind of the standard utility problem.
So it's going to be the same thing?
Well, it's going to be similar, you know, and what we'll do is we can, you know, the problem, I think, generally with double poles, and others may disagree, but it's usually the pole owner has a problem with kind of getting the new stuff over and then getting the old one out. From our perspective, we work incredibly closely with the utilities and incredibly closely with cities, we hope, and we will move, we move our equipment very, very quickly. It's easier for us. We don't have as much. We could do twenty-two in a couple of days, you know, if we were to do all the double poles across the city. So it's, we're, we try to be less of an impact, but it's a pretty easy move for us to go from the old pole to the new pole when that situation arises.
Okay, but if you have this device up there, and you're on it, and then another company's on it, but it's your device, but you're saying you can't touch their wire. Like, if I, if I put my wire on your device, right, are you telling me that I, if I don't move my wire, you can't touch it? It's your device.
No, no. So the device is ours, right? And we absolutely would be moving our, and as Amanda said, the, our equipment on the pole is one antenna and one shroud. We would be responsible for moving those two pieces of equipment and any of the wires that are ours. The, the other cable companies or phone companies or electric companies would be responsible for moving their wires.
Yes, but their wires are not, have nothing to do with your antennas.
They don't.
Okay, that's, okay.
Nothing to do with our antennas.
Yeah, if I could just ask clarification to clarify from the chair. So you are doing business with multiple providers, but because they're all interusing your one piece of equipment, when you move it, you're moving all those providers as well because of your license agreements that allow you to be able to do that, but you're still only talking about one piece of equipment?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a different situation than our double poles. Thank you. Councilman DePero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, again, guys. A couple of just quick questions. It's my understanding that a lot of these upgrades are pretty much federally mandated and regulated anyway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's kind of just the formality that we're here? Okay. I'm happy that it might be a little easier moving some of this equipment, so thank you if you can expedite that when problems do arise where service needs to be switched. So, thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. So with the equipment shroud, even though it's going to be a little bit larger, these units that are being updated are actually going to be quieter?
Yes, so there's, they'll be spaced further apart within the shroud, so they'll have passive cooling, so the fans won't have to kick on. And then the upgraded shroud technology has sound dampening in it.
Okay. And if you know, I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but the existing antennas that you have, when you were granted that license, was there a timeframe that was put on that, or was it open-ended?
It was, it was open-ended. The agreement, the, really, there are two difficult parts of what we do. One is dealing with the utility and the other's dealing with municipalities. All of the municipal agreements we got earlier in the life cycle of our, of our deployment were open-ended agreements, attachment licenses to go on the, on the utility pole. As long as we maintained our agreement with the utility, then we would have our agreement with, then we would be granted our grant with the city. That's changing a little bit as the technology's evolving in other jurisdictions, but the reality is, is that we're incentivized to be working very closely with you all.
Sure.
Because the demand is increasing rather than decreasing, right? And that's why we're trying to do as many co-locations as we possibly can.
Okay. And we've, we've had other companies come in front of us before, and the idea is we put it kind of like on a, on a timeframe, and then with some stipulations in place that in the event that something needed to be repaired, and it wasn't repaired, or if it was required to be removed, and it wasn't removed voluntarily by the company, that the city could, at its option, go forward, do it, and shift the burden of that expense to the company. Is something like that acceptable to you folks, or no?
You're on that side of the table. We're on this side of the table.
Two different perspectives, absolutely.
So, and again, I'm going to fall back on our hope that we really do try to work really closely. So if you come to us with a noise problem, we're going to try to solve the noise problem because we're not going to want to take our equipment down.
Okay.
So we've got a huge incentive with the amount of infrastructure we have in the road. We've got a huge investment in Everett and around, a lot of municipalities around greater Boston, that we're really incentivized to find a solution that's going to work for both of us.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, and I understand, you know, the different perspectives. So, if I could, could we please have a city solicitor before us?
If I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we ask the city solicitor to come before us?
Should we step down?
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Solicitor, you recall that we've had another company come before us, and they were looking for a license to be able to put equipment on a pole. That was a new piece of equipment on a pole. This is an upgrade, so there are some similarities, there are some differences. Is there any language in the agreement with these folks that we could use from the prior?
You don't remember the conditions?
If you recall, there was, yeah, if you recall, the condition we're talking about was, in the event that there was a need to remove, uh, equipment, and it wasn't being removed, or if there were defective equipment that wasn't being repaired, that the city would retain the option to, to repair it.
Right.
And, you know, pass the cost over. And I think, did we put a limitation on timeframe in terms of the license? Obviously, there's a, there's an investment here, and they need, and they need to recoup their investment. We get that. We're not looking to do anything there. But at the same time, I don't think that the city of Everett should be putting the antennas and the equipment on these poles in perpetuity. So I don't think we should have them there forever. They serve a purpose. It is going to benefit the members of the community. But at the same time, from our perspective, we don't want these things on the pole forever. We could always negotiate again down the road, and if it is something that is a beneficial relationship, we could further that relationship. But if this community at some point in time finds that it's not, we have an issue. So I don't know if those conditions have been expressed to these folks at all.
No, that would be your, um...
Okay.
You'd have the authority to place reasonable conditions.
Okay, and thank you. So to you folks, no problem with the equipment, but there are some conditions that we have put on other folks, and I think that from our role as a city government, we need to protect our residents. I would ask that those same conditions be put on you. I don't expect you to understand and have them in front of you tonight and say, sure, go with it. So I'll yield the floor, but my recommendation is that we're going to lay this on the table to get you that information, and make sure that it's something that you can live with, and if you can't, at the next meeting, we can talk about it, and maybe we can structure something that works. But from our perspective, the city council, we need to make sure that we're not just putting equipment on poles that's going to be there forever, and that it is going to serve a valid, viable interest for our community, and it's done in a, in a manner that protects the enjoyment of our residents. So I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that there are some things that I'd like to see worked into this license. I think that it's something that you will find acceptable, but if you don't, we can absolutely talk about it the next time around. So, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Counselor Del Sol.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. On the maintenance of these equipments, do you go by every year and check on them? I know we have the fans that cool everything off. If there's a problem with the fan, would you know if there's a problem, or until we got a phone call to call you, to call you, our company? How would you know if there's a fault on one of the piece's equipment on the pole?
So we have a twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week network operations center. We have local Crown Castle employees that take care of the maintenance, and we do visit all of our sites annually. We get, a new ticket gets opened up every, once a year, different quarters for our full deployment, for us to go investigate. And the question about whether we would know if there's noise at the, at the site, one of the pieces that our network operations center monitors is output and temperature. And the reason it does is because they have huge impacts on our, you know, ability for the equipment to thrive. So we would know about that when it's, you know, we would know when it, when the fan goes on, we would know if the, if the temperature's heating up, if the fan's likely to go on. We would, that's something that our maintenance operation would know, and it's something that our maintenance operation kind of looks at when we're doing our annual reviews.
There's no danger to anybody of the fan that not kick on, and it, let's say, overheated, or something like that? Is there any danger to anybody walking by, or anything coming down on them, or anything like that?
No. Once it overheats, it would just...
Shuts off?
Break, yeah.
What about the ones that have been there for a while now? Do you have any issues, you know, in the past?
We don't. It's, it's something that it's, it's something we're always worried about, right?
Right.
So one of the things we look at during our, you know, something that causes, the equipment can be louder sometimes, is if the fan's a little off-kilter, right?
Right.
So one of the, during our annual review, that's a portion of it, to look at the fans and make sure that there's nothing, you know, in there that's rusting out, or if it's, make sure that the blades are going in the right direction.
It works in the cold, and there's snow and ice and everything, the fans? All right, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, through you to, invited guests. Is this federally regulated, these antennas to be done?
Yes.
So they actually would supersede any vote that we were to take in these chambers? Am I accurate by saying that the vote is sort of, it's important, discussion is important, but federal law supersedes local regulations? Is that a fair statement to make?
Yes, but we want to work with the city.
Of course. But our vote, whether it was positive or negative, you can continue to do the work that you are proposing here on this piece tonight.
The path of least resistance is to get your approval.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that I knew whether we voted no. If we decide that this isn't right, and then we see these going up in the future, you guys can, you guys can do so by, by federal law.
Well, so there are two different pieces of the puzzle. Because these are upgrades, we have different protections. If we were trying to put new equipment on a pole that doesn't have equipment on it right now, it would be a different analysis. A little, you know, we still have federal rights in it, but it's just a little bit more tricky. This one is more straightforward.
All set, Councilman? Councilman DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this company's been up here, this is the second time they've been here, Mr. President, and I understand that...
Do you have questions for them?
I, uh, I actually...
If not, I'd ask you to hold.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any more questions, but I don't know if anybody else had any questions before I...
Okay, no further questions. Excuse customary, thanks. Oh, one second, one second. Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, everybody. I have a couple of funny questions I guess I'm going to ask, and that is that I'm looking at the order here, and it says to replace seven poles. Why seven?
So we build, we deploy our network based on carrier demand. We've, we build infrastructure for the four major wireless carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, and T-Mobile. This, these are the seven locations that we could co-locate Sprint on, and Sprint is identified as the seven places where their network is the weakest. So they're places where Sprint is experiencing dropped calls, or...
They call you.
They call us.
You're all like the repairman. You go out and you get your hook and ladder...
We see ourselves as being cooler than that.
Okay. How many poles have you worked on in Everett's?
Is it twenty-two?
I believe we have twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Okay. And so you could probably wind up repairing them all. I mean, if that ever happens that way. You know, whatever comes along. I'm not saying anything wrong or anything like that, you know? But I, I think I told you when I was, when you were here before that we had one pole put on Ferry, was asked to go on Ferry Street. They never got it there, but it did make it another location. And that was the only one that was in the city, and it was going to be the only one in the city. And all I can see now is poles sticking up everywhere. Every pole is going to have an extension on it, because this is what's going to happen. This is the industry, this is the way it's going. And I'm not for this, by the way, so just to let you know. And that's the reason for it, because I can envision every single pole have an extension on it, and they don't look nice. They don't, they look ugly. You know, it's a pole, and it goes to break another, another pole on top of it, and pretty soon they'll be putting another pole on top of that pole, whatever it takes to get going, you know? So, I mean, I don't know why it has to be, you know, my antenna is this big. Why don't this has to be an eight-foot-tall, round, such and such that goes up there? Whatever's in it, I don't know. But you guys got to come up with something else to, to come up with something better to go on top of poles. I know you'll have no problem getting this, but, you know, you got to think in the future to come, that this is not going to be a good thing for the city. It's going to be very unsightly. Every single pole, every single wire, every single cable that comes across those things, we have to drive under it every single day. And we're getting tired of doing it. I mean, a lot of my friends are getting tired of doing it, you know? So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say to you. You know, you guys start coming up with something new. That'd be great for us, and I would support you all the way, okay?
Well, if I may, Counselor, we, that's why we promote co-location, is that allows us to put four carriers on one pole, and allows us to not have redundant equipment on every single pole.
Yeah, but you will. Maybe not you. But, you know, you got to understand, it's going to happen. It may not be this year or next year, but maybe five years down the road. That's what it's going to be. Mr. Parkes, thank you.
If there are no other questions, just a quick, thanks. Just a quick, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other piece? Counselor DeFlorio, ask for first, and then Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've had these people up here twice already. They've given us quite a bit to read. They're already in the city. We've never really got any complaints. And, I mean, to me, I'm ready to vote on it tonight. I don't like these things on the poles either. But, you know, everybody has a cell phone, everybody has cable, everybody has internet, and when their internet don't work, everybody goes crazy, because my internet Because my internet went off for a half hour last night, I think the end of the world came. Because my son had to finish something for school. So, unfortunately, these new equipment comes, you need new equipment, as much as we hate to see it. So, maybe they can make it prettier, make them red, white and blue. I don't, whatever it is. But I, I can't see, I understand we put conditions on other, like, other carriers. But they were new. This isn't new. This, this is, they're already here. They have 21 of them. They upgraded seven. We haven't received any complaints. So, what's the condition do we want to put? I, you know, I understand we want to do the work in a timely manner. Do it tonight. Let's tell them now what we want to do. Thank you.
Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand my colleagues' concerns. And quite honestly, they seem like honorable people. And the equipment that is being upgraded is actually going to be quieter, which will work a benefit to the community. It is bundling units so that we won't have multiple poles for sources. My only concern is that when the original one was listed, again, there's some overlap and there's some differences. What's happening here tonight with the upgrade, we have little control over that because they're required. But the reality is when, when the license was issued the first time, when this body issued it, they didn't put any conditions on it. And that was an error. So, you have an opportunity to put some reasonable conditions on it to protect the community. And that's what I would like to do. I would like to lay this piece over, postpone it to our next meeting so that we could get that language to the representatives so they could look at it, they could show it to legal counsel, see what they can live with, what they can't live with. And then we could discuss it at the next meeting. I don't have that language in front of us. But the language was, there was a term of years. There was something to the extent that if there was defective equipment and they were contacted and they didn't respond, that the city had the option to address it if they wanted to. And if the equipment were to run its course and expire and they didn't do it, that the city would have the option to go out there and do it. Now, I'm not saying that those would be acceptable. They may, they may not. But I think that we're derelict of our duties in protecting this community if we don't put those restrictions on them. And I understand that they've been here a couple of times. And I do appreciate it, and we're not looking to waste anybody's time. But those are conditions that protect our community. And that is one of our primary functions as a city government. So, I'm asking that we postpone this to our next meeting. And clerk, get the information to the representatives of the company as what type of conditions we put on other things in the past. And that way, they can look at it, see if it's acceptable, and we can talk about it next, next meeting.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Okay, we have a motion for, to postpone this for two weeks. To our next meeting, rather. It's been seconded. Councilman McGlaughlin on the motion.
I'm, I'm, thank you.
Nope. All right, so the motion before you is-
Favorable action on my, my-
Is there a second?
I know.
It's been seconded. Okay, so we have a motion, favorable action, second. Please remember, when you make your motions, make sure it's most, it's seconded so we can take them in the correct order. So, the first motion is postpone this for two weeks. It's been seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, chairs in doubt, so I'm going to ask again, I'm going to ask clerk to read the roll.
Councilman Capone.
I'm postponing.
This is a postponement, sorry. Councilman Capone, yes. Councilor Delisola.
No.
Councilor DeFlorio.
No.
Councilor DePero.
No.
Councilor Hamlin. Councilor Mccasey.
No.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
No.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
No.
Three ayes, six nays, postponement has failed.
Okay, with motion before you for favorable action, clerk, read the roll.
On the motion.
Okay, I'll show Councilman McGlaughlin first.
Thanks, Mr. President. On the motion, I believe whether we voted this tonight or not, under federal law, they're able to just do this. So, we're asking for postponement. We were asking for postponement on something. We really don't have that much restriction on it.
I think you might have misunderstood the explanation. They're here for a license for us to put equipment on an Everett city property. They don't have the authority to just arbitrarily do it, otherwise they wouldn't be here. I think you misunderstood the jurisdiction, the federal jurisdiction. Am I, do I have it correct?
You have it semi-correct, Mr. President.
Thank you.
We actually have to do it in a timely manner. We, you only have 60 days to act on this from the date that I received it, which you're running out of time. So, whether you, if you don't vote on it in 60 days, they get it no matter what. You shall-
That was the intent.
By, by, I'm sorry. Let me just look at the email. So, we received it October 13th, I believe it was. So, I believe December 13th is roughly the date, give or take. They've, I just wanted to give you all the information. I think it's December 13th. I'll give you the exact date, but I believe it's December 13th. Mr. Rigucci would have it, because he handled this from, from day one. It does say that you shall act under, under the law. This company has, has been here before and they're updating. So, it is different requirements than a new company. But we also charge them also. So, you know, we have a fee that I charge that, that will be coming back to the city of Everett in the vicinity of almost $2,000 that comes back. That's how you get that free cash account, you know? I bring in revenue for a lot of these. So, they'll be paying for these permits. So, I just wanted to give you everything while I was sitting here.
And, Mr. President, that was to-
So, that's the information I have.
That was to my point, was can we put the restrictions on it tonight and just pass it? What, the restrictions on it tonight? We're here.
I believe the logistic problem is the fact that we're not able to put our hands on the restrictions at this moment. So, if we're not able to do it at this moment, then to be able to get that, put restrictions without giving them an opportunity to review them is unfair. And I think that's the consensus of the, of the membership here. Okay, one second, one second.
Mr. Chairman-
One second, okay, wait a minute. I'm not recognizing anybody at this moment.
If you want to postpone, lay this on the table for 10, 15 minutes and let Mr. Mangan take my chair, I may be able to retrieve it in a timely manner. I'm not saying I can, but-
I will draw my motion.
If you give me a few minutes, I can do, go to my office and do that.
We'll postpone this, say for-
Just lay it on the table.
Lay it on the table.
Take it back anytime.
Approximately 30 minutes.
Just lay it on the table.
Lay it on the table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and we appoint Mr. Mangan to- That's the next motion, that's a separate motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to lay this on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, if you make your motion now.
Move that we appoint Mr. Mangan to take over clerk's duties temporarily.
Okay, a motion for, for let's have Mr. Mike Mangan to take over. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read the next item of business.
Item number two, Mr. President, is ordered by Council Peter Aiden Napolitano as president, the appointment of Steven Alteieri to the Traffic Commission for a three-year term expiring November 30th, 2021.
Councilman Hamlin. What's the rationale? We appoint people all the time who aren't here. That's not, that, that's not, that's, that is not, it's up to you. If you want to make that motion, that's fine. But we have appointed other people who for not being here, who are not able to make a meeting. So, there's a motion to postpone item number two. Next meeting, is there a second? Okay, there's no second. What's your pleasure?
Second.
Second.
A motion, favorable action, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Councilman Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delisola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin.
Yes.
Councilor Mccasey.
Yes.
Council Matu, uh, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, two nays, you have passed.
Okay, appointed Steven Alteieri to the Traffic Commission. Clerk, read item number four.
Item number four, Mr. President. Being ordered by the City Council, City of Everett to accept a donation of $1,000 from the Cambridge Health Alliance for Thanksgiving to be deposited into the City of Everett's Human Services Donation Account.
Favorable action on the-
Motion, accept the donation, letter that needs to be sent. Do I have a second? Clerk, read the roll.
Councilman Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delisola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin.
Yes.
Councilor Mccasey.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, nays, you have passed.
Clerk, read item number five.
Item number five, Mr. President. Transfer $650,000 from the water sewer budgetary fund balance free cash to reduce the FY 2019 water sewer rates.
Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we have Mr. Demas before us?
Want a second? All in favor?
Yeah, bring them all up.
The ayes opposed? The ayes have it?
You want to bring everybody up?
No.
Any, Mr. Demas? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Eric Demas, CFO.
Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guest. Mr. Demas, thank you very much. I think earlier this evening, there was a presentation that there was a little bit under $4 million in the enterprise fund. It's going to stay with that?
Yes, there was 3.5, actually closer to $3.6 million in water sewer free cash that was recently certified by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, and we're looking to put an additional 650 in there?
No, using, out of that 3.6 that was certified-
Yep.
-to use that to apply the revenue source-
Okay.
-so that it mitigates the rate increases.
Okay, but the remainder of it stays with the water sewer commission for whatever?
It will stay till, it will stay in the water sewer fund-
Okay.
-until it's recertified in the prior year.
Okay, do you, and you may not know, do you know what that 650 will do to the rate in terms of difference with, without?
Well, what I can tell you is, to be consistent from year after year, this will be the third year in a row where we're able to maintain rates at only 2%. Rate increases.
And that's the intent?
It's to try to keep it, it's try to keep the rates moving forward relatively consistent so that it's easier for our residents to budget. We have a lot of debt that's coming on and coming due. And unfortunately, I would probably say 60 to 70% of our operating costs in the water sewer are driven by MWRA and those water rates. And I can tell you, in the past year, the rates increased about 6%. So, the city's been able to build that up. That was in the negative a few years past. But you hit a certain point where, you know, you want to maintain a balance of anywhere from 10 to 20%. In analyzing our records, it looks like 16% is where we want to be. We've exceeded that for the first time. So, as such, wanting to return it back to the ratepayers so that we, we keep a balance and we keep it smooth moving forward.
Okay, so if we took the 650 and applied it to the rates and we took the balance of the 3.6, where would we be at in terms of percentage, you're saying?
When you say the balance of the 3.6, I didn't understand that portion.
From the 3.6, we're going to remove 650.
Yes.
And put that towards the rates. That's going to leave us $3 million. What would we have for surplus in that account in order to address capital improvement, repairs, things of that nature?
We would have roughly the $3 million moving forward, yes.
Okay.
Which is going to still put us within the best practices range of the 12 to 20%. So, we're still in that range. But we're at the point, and this was, this has been a request from the City Services Commission for the past few years. And this was actually the first year that we were in that range that we had reached our target goal, that we could, we could be at.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most, my questions have been answered. Any other questions? With the customary thanks, if you have a, no other questions?
We have a motion, excuse customary thanks, second.
Mr. President, suspend Rule 13?
Motion, suspend Rule 13?
And favorable action on the order.
Favor? For suspending Rule 13, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Favorable action, do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, read the roll.
Councilman Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delisola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin.
Yes.
Councilor Mccasey.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, nays, Mr. President, you have passed.
Pass the item. Clerk, read item number six.
Item number six, Mr. President. Transfer $4 million from the budgetary fund balance free cash to reduce to FY 2019 tax levy.
Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Demas, in regards to the $4 million, you said that the approximate savings would be 10 cents per thousand? Approximately, I understand, is it per ma-
Per, per million. And let me just offer this just real quickly, and I know you don't want long-winded.
The way I'm thinking is if it's, if, when you're talking 10 cents per million, is that on the total of the millions? Because if my house is worth $700,000, I'm going to save 7 cents, I mean, 70 cents?
Let me answer the question.
That's where I want to get to. Historically, when you don't have all of these moving parts, you can talk about the rate and see how it equates to your piece of property. Unfortunately, you really can't do that because our valuations on the various class, the various classifications are having such dramatic swings. So, one of the things I did was from a residential standpoint, it's, because our rate went down, but certain people, their taxes are going up. So, rather than to talk about the rate, basically, every million dollars will save approximately a house that's valued at, say, $450,000, will save about $50 on your actual tax bill. Whereas, a million-dollar property is going to be about $100. So, if I put it in actual tax bills, it makes more sense.
What I'm trying to say is to give up $4 million to save $50, I don't know. It's just, it doesn't balance. Because when we said the tax rate was, the tax was going to be 11%. That was stated because of giving the money to the schools and also our budget and so on. During the budget here, I mean, we said that the taxes were going to go up approximately 11%.
And when I use those figures, what I do is there's a lot that can happen between the budget that the City Council is actually voting and when the valuations are approved by the Department of Revenue, our free cash is certified. I'm always going to give a conservative. I don't ever want to give up here and give an estimation that it's 6% and then they come in at 11.
Right, I think this confuses a lot of people, so I want to make this very simple. You have a house that's worth $600,000, okay? I want to go a little high. The average tax bill last year was what, $7,000?
Approximately.
Okay. What's it going to be this year, even with the four million?
Twenty-five percent.
Last year, we had the twenty-five percent too. We had twenty-five percent last year, right? And if you don't have that answer, that's fine. I don't, I don't expect to put you on the spot.
No, 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 let me, I can get somewhere close. I didn't-
Yeah, I don't want an exact figure, I want an approximate figure. My thinking is, okay, if I have a six hundred thousand dollar home, and my tax bill was seven thousand dollars last year, your taxes this year are going to be, say, seventy-five hun, seven thousand five hundred. With the four million dollars, you're going to save twenty dollars, whatever. I'm just making up figures right now, but it's not worth it to give up four million dollars to save twenty dollars.
And don't quote me, but on a, if you use the four million on a roughly six hundred thousand dollar house, your savings are going to be approximately two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay.
Around two fifty.
That's fine. So it's worth it then. You know what I'm trying to say? This is what, you know, I was trying, I understand you don't have exact figures, but if it's, and I understand it's all taxpayers' money, it doesn't matter if it's fifty dollars, thirty dollars, or twenty dollars, but I'm thinking if it's only a twenty dollar savings, we're better off using the four million to do a project in the city so that in the future we don't have to do it. But if it's over two hundred dollar savings, or even a hundred and eighty, whatever, it does, it's still a taxpayers' money.
It's certainly worth it, and it's certainly worth it to the taxpayers. Earlier during the previous meeting, Councilor Capone had made a point that it's more money than, that we raised that we didn't need to. Well, just also so I can give some context, and he's-
We've got other revenues in, I understand that.
He's correct. It's, our revenues exceeded our estimates. You know, one of our biggest areas was excise, motor vehicle. When the economy does well, we collect a lot more excise. People are buying more newer cars. In addition to that, our licenses and permits were up significantly, building permits. Those fire exceeded, so that helps as well. In addition to that, a lot of, a lot of emphasis is placed, and scrutiny is placed on the budget itself. Just because you approve a budget of, say, two hundred million, I don't want to spend two hundred million. I want to spend and scrutinize every penny so that we can return as much as we can. And what happens is, you raise that, and then the next year, it gets returned. And then we do the same process. That way, we never get caught with an unanticipated issue.
And I agree with how you're doing it, because I've been here a long time, and through the years, the administrations would always come up and transfer money. They'd do a low budget, and then they send you two hundred thousand for this, three hundred thousand. I like it this way. I like it that you're not constantly coming up here asking for money. So that's why I agree to the budget when the, when the year comes up, when the budget comes up, because of this administration not coming up here every week for money. So I'm okay with that.
It's a balancing act.
It's a balancing, right. And I also, I do understand that we did have more revenues for that reason. People are buying new cars. People are building, you're getting more building permits. So those are revenues that you wouldn't anticipate until it happens.
Exactly. And as, as I've been saying, the administration's been saying prior to the opening of the resort, this is our toughest year, and if we have the ability to provide some relief to the taxpayers, then we have that obligation to do so. Certainly, I would like to build up our reserves at a much faster rate for what we've drawn down in the past couple of years. But again, it's a balancing act. And we're still going to be increasing our reserves, but I want to help. It is important to help the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Mr. Demus, just a quick question. If the casino, when completed, was to pay taxes, what would they be paying for taxes on that project down there?
Under the community host agreement, they're guaranteed-
I know, I know what the guaranteed host is, but say, real life, they'd say they were taxed like everybody else at the thirty-five per thousand, right? And that'd be a commercial down there?
I don't know what their actual final valuation would be. You know, they started out at one point one, they went to two point, you know, one point six, and then it's up to two point one. I'd have to take a look at that, because one of the reasons why they, these types of-
We wouldn't have a budget in the city if they paid true taxes, is all I'm saying. I mean, I know we have a host agreement.
If we were to tax them on the quoted number that, or the reference number that everybody uses at two point six billion, it would be a significant tax bill. The reason why there's always a community host agreement everywhere there's a casino is, there's a lot of cost that goes into these types of structures that you don't get in other places because of the gaming aspect of it.
But there's always a lot of cost that they earn because of the gaming aspect of it, so it does really a-
I was at a-
It's a great thing, but you know, realistically, could it be one fifty, two hundred million dollars a year in taxes?
It would be significant.
Significant, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. And I appreciate that it's not an exact science. And the last thing in the world you want to do is undervalue, and then you come up with a shortfall, and then you're in a bigger problem. But I know that, you know, we've, we've bantered around this chamber all the time, ten cents, a penny, five cents, a dollar, it's not worth it. Well, I've been on record, time after time after time. I don't care if we return one cent to the taxpayer. I'll tell you, if you ask the average individual out there, will you take your penny? They'd say, yes, I would, thank you very much. So I think that to the extent that we can try to reduce the burden on the taxpayer, I think that we have an obligation to do it. I'm glad that we have enough of a surplus here to do it. So I appreciate your efforts in the information, and I will support this a hundred percent. So, thank you very much.
And I will take that penny as well.
Well, favorable action. Well, Stephen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
First, right?
No, we didn't return the six.
No, you suspended on the three.
Yeah, we'll suspend Rule thirteen, just to be safe. Just to be safe, we'll suspend Rule thirteen again.
On number six.
We did it on number five, not six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Would you like to invite the-
I would, Mr. President. We can invite the guest back.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. You have passed item number six.
Mr. President, suspend the rules, and, well, I'll take, actually take item seven from the table.
We have a motion to take item number seven from the table. It's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Would you like to invite the-
I would, Mr. President. We can invite the guest back. Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. I think you were handed with a copy of restrictions that we had done in the past. Have you had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Are you folks, first of all, are you comfortable with it as is? Do you need to show it to legal counsel at all?
At the outset, I'll say, the way that I'm looking at a lot of this is, it's articulating what we really want is to be good community partners, right? And there's nothing here that's terribly different than what you would see on a building permit. The terms issue might be something that we'll have to revisit. We've, you know, that we're a company that is going to be here for a very, very long time.
Sure.
So, you know, it's, we're looking, I'm looking at, when I read this as a ten-year agreement, I think that's a good starting point. I think nine years from now, it's going to be somebody else's problem, but we are going to be here for a long time, and everything in here, I think, is consistent with what we, what we would see in other places.
So there's nothing, there's nothing in there that caused you any concern at all?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure that I have the authority to speak for the company on that issue, but that, you know, looking at it, there's, there's not anything here that's terribly different than what you would put on other permits, and if you've already given it to other folks, then I think it's, it's consistent.
And I think so. And the thing is, I know that some of my colleagues want to save you the aggravation and the time and inconvenience of coming back here, and I'm all for that. But at the same time, I don't want you folks to feel like there's a gun to your head, or that your hands are tied. So if you're comfortable with it, I'm happy to make a motion to incorporate that in. If there's anything that you have any concerns about, or if you wanted to have someone from the company look at it, then at that point, I'd recommend we hold over, but I'll leave that to you.
And our understanding is that other carriers have already signed-
Yes.
-permits and done installations with these permits as a condition, then if there's a, you know, kind of the general rule right now is that we all end up with the same deal to some extent. So if that's what these guys are saying, then-
Exactly.
We're on board.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have no other questions.
Councilman DeFlorio.
On the renewal of the five-year term, it's not just for nine years. You can renew your permit every five years. There's no limit on it.
I see.
There's no limit. You could do it for the next thirty years. Every five years, you just have to come and talk to us. We may be here, we may be not.
Sure, sure. I see.
We'll be our best to get back.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action. Is there a second?
Excuse us, the customary thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action. I saw it on the second.
Favorable action with the restrictions.
With the restrictions.
Okay, let's start it from scratch. Counsel, make your motion.
I move favorable action on number seven, incorporating the restrictions that-
Can we call them conditions or restrictions, Mr.?
Well, the conditions.
Okay.
All right. Could I ask the clerk, just for the, for the viewing public, to read the restrictions?
Yes. These are very similar restrictions slash conditions as we gave to AT&amp;T a few months back. It starts with a five-year term, with a five-year renewal option following the permit. The permit may be rescinded if the installation is not substantially commenced within one year of the issuance date of the permit. Equipment no longer used to provide service shall be removed by the licensee or successor at no cost to the city within sixty days. In the event unused equipment is not timely removed by the licensee slash successor, the city council shall be authorized to remove said equipment and bill the licensee successor for any expense incurred by the city. Licensee to pay all electricity costs associated with the operations of the equipment. The licensee shall indemnify the City of Everett against any claims brought by third parties associated with the installation, removal, and operations of the equipment. The licensee shall comply with the local building code structural requirements. The licensee shall enter into a mutually acceptable mitigation agreement with the City of Everett. Noncompliance with any of these conditions above shall be cause of the city to terminate the license.
Okay. So we have a motion before you for favorable action with the following amendments. Did we actually pass the amendment first?
We need to amend the piece first. With these restrictions.
With these restrictions. All right, clerk will read the roll.
With the, with the favorable action with conditions. Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
No.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin. Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition. Congratulations.
Just to the petitioners, Wednesday at noon or after that is when you can get the permits. They'll be issued by Mr. Gucci out of my office. Okay? Thank you.
Make a motion to file for reconsideration.
Second motion.
Not to reveal.
We have a motion for reconsideration. Okay, clerk will read the roll.
On reconsideration, Councilor Capone.
No.
Councilor Delasola.
No.
Councilor DeFlorio.
No.
Councilor DePiero.
No.
Councilor Hanlon.
No.
Councilor Marchese.
No.
Councilor McLaughlin.
No.
Councilor Simonelli.
No.
Councilor Napolitano.
No.
Zero yeas, nine nays, reconsideration is field. The order stands. Thank you.
Okay, clerk will read item number eight.
Is a petition offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President, a petition from Boston Trustworthy Limousine Inc. of 125 Trustance Street in Everett for a livery license. I want you to know, this was placed on the agenda accidentally by my staff. This is one of those things where they're the home-based businesses, and you don't need to license them anymore. It's just one vehicle. It was a mistake. So I would say no action. Yeah, it was, it was just a oversight.
So make a motion to refer back to-
Motion.
Thank you.
A motion to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number nine.
Item number nine. These are all committee on legislative affairs and elections reports. Item number nine, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael J. McLaughlin that the parking clerk appear at the next government operations, public safety, public service meeting. This committee report referred to the traffic commission as their recommendation. No, originally it was government ops, now it's referred to traffic. You refer, I'm sorry. That's a good question. Let me read, let me read. The original thing, it was placed in the agenda. Okay, so that a representative from the parking clerk's office appear at the next meeting to discuss issues issuing parking stickers for commercial vehicles. So that is what they're sending to the parking department. Issues with parking stickers for commercial vehicles.
Councilman DePiero.
I just want to clarify, it's more or less finding out how those vehicles are getting parking stickers, not looking to give them out to commercial vehicles, just so everyone's on the same page. It's been a little bit of an issue, so just trying to get to the bottom of it.
That makes sense, because traffic is the one that makes that call. Okay. So is a motion to refer item number nine to the traffic commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, we suspend the rules and take items ten and eleven collectively?
A motion to take items number ten and eleven collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
One moment, Mr. President, please. Item number ten, eleven. Item number ten is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President that the city council rules be changed to prohibit any new business, items on the regular agenda from being addressed after eleven P.M. Items will be addressed on the following evening at a continued meeting. The recommendation was to refer back to sponsor. Item number eleven is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President that a celebrations committee be added to coordinate celebratory events throughout the year. Also, the recommendation was to refer back to sponsor.
Accept the committee reports, refer back to sponsor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. If I could say from the chair, though, since I put that piece on, we have not got out of here after eleven o'clock. So-
You scared of him?
Because the committee said not, they didn't think it was a good idea. So, so proof is, the threat has as much weight as the resolution. Clerk will read item number twelve.
Item number twelve is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano-
Remember that Councilor Delasola.
And Councilor Fred Capone. That the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections updates the city council rules. This was referred for favorable action as amended. I do want to tell you that you do have to hold this over to pass it.
Motion, accept the committee report and postpone to the next meeting?
No.
Second. So we have a motion to hold, postpone item number twelve till the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen is, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that the Committee on Legislative Affairs review the current council rules and legislative code with regard to conduct of the city council members and its employee, employees, and to report back with any recommendation, recommended amendments. It was recommended for favorable action as further amended, but because this was a resolution, I recommend that we accept it, place it on file, refer back to sponsor. I have created a sub-order that is an actual order which has teeth at the end of the, under new business. It's also under Councilor Capone's name, but the resolution doesn't have any teeth, and so I just caution you to do that.
So move. Is it favorable action?
Nope, it's to refer back to sponsor.
I thought we had to accept the resolution.
You accept the committee report, place it on file, refer back.
All right.
Okay, so a motion is to accept the committee report, place it on file, and refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors John Leo McKinnon, Fred Capone, and Rosa DeFlorio that the City of Everett look into the feasibility of studying internship program for all departments, and to reach out to colleges and trade schools in the area to tap into the talent pool they may have.
Whatever the will of the body is, obviously Councilor McKinnon is one of the main sponsors here. I'd ask that we lay it on the table to give an opportunity to speak on it. It's probably going to end up being referred out, but as a courtesy to our colleague who's not here, I'd ask that we postpone it to our next meeting.
Second motion. We have a motion to postpone item number fifteen to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number sixteen.
You want the administration to come back with some information at the next meeting?
Right.
Yep. Mr. O'Donnell knows that.
Okay.
Item number sixteen is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President to delete section twenty-three, Appendix A, in its entirety, and move it, and moving it to revise ordinances, chapter four, section four dash one C. Soper from ISD, that our fees, is this, am I correct? Yeah. So this, our fees are stuck in zoning ordinances. So anytime we want to change a fee, we have to go, we have to do this formality. We have to start here, it gets passed down to the planning board, they deliberate, have public hearings, do everything, come back, even to change any minute fee. I think, we didn't think that was what any other city did, and we looked into it, and it really isn't. So we put it into a fee structure like we did all the fees in my office, fees for all across the city are in general ordinances. That way, still, you have the authority to pass it, and the mayor has to sign off, but we took out the planning board, because for fees, they shouldn't be involved in that. So all this is doing is removing the fee structure from Appendix A zoning, and just moving it, the whole thing as is, into ordinances, general ordinances. And then it may be further amended down the road, but it's just to pull it out of zoning, put it into general ordinances for you to have an easier time when we have to pass these.
And we get the final vote on it?
Oh, you always have the final vote. It's just, all we're doing is cutting out the planning board, and they sent the recommendation back favorable.
Favorable action on the audience.
Second.
This is for enrollment.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action. Clerk, go read the roll.
As recommended by the planning board, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Markesi?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays, Mr. President. You have enrolled that, so you know.
Clerk, go read item number 17.
Item number 17 is an ordinance offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president, an ordinance to standardize procedures for licenses and permits issued under the authority of the city council. Again, this is something, the next two are under my authority and purview. We do have the consultant who helped me write, or wrote most of this, Mr. Flood, in the audience. These are just standardizing procedures for licenses that are issued under your authority and my office. So it's just streamlining it. That way, we have a structure of how the applications need to look, and what information I need to get from everybody. So it's just standardizing procedures. It's pretty, yes, and so, yeah, you're voting on them, you're still always approving them. All it is, is standardizing the procedure for me, because right now, I have so many different applications, and it's kind of confusing. We want to standardize them all to be relatively the same, unless there's, you know, certain restrictions with certain licenses, but generally, they're going to have the same information, and right now, I don't have that.
Favorable action on the ordinance.
Favorable action, and second. Clerk, go read the roll.
And this is again for enrollments. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Markesi?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays. You have enrolled, Mr. President.
Clerk, go read item number 18.
Item number 18. Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, an ordinance to better regulate lodging establishments, establishment licenses issued under the authority of the city council.
Favorable action? On the piece?
I can explain.
The motion for favorable action's been seconded. Counsel Capone, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could either the sponsor or the clerk illuminate us on what exactly we're doing?
So, as you know, Counsel DePiero, over the last year, has worked on lodging licenses with me. We had, again, our consultant work on this. In state law, they, lodging and in holders differentiate, okay? So a lodging house is more like the ones that we almost always licensed for the last how many decades. But now, we have hotels. We may have motels and bed and breakfasts at some point, but we definitely have at least one hotel. So we felt the need to separate it, make it its own licensing. It's very similar, but they have a few different rules, and obviously, a larger fee scale because they're larger developments, and they cause a bigger burden on my office and the city. So that's all we did, is we separated it, we created a separate lodging for everyone else, and these are called in holders, which are hotel, motel, bed and breakfast. That's it. And under state law, that's how it's written, so we wanted to make sure we were in compliance with state law.
Okay. And if I could throw you to our clerk, was this part of the packet that we got over the weekend?
Oh, yes.
Okay, because I don't remember, I don't remember reading it. There was a lot of...
I know, I sent it to...
So I read a lot.
I know I sent it to the clerk, these should have been all there.
Okay.
I think, I mean, maybe gone omitted out of yours by accident. I mean, there was a lot of pieces of paper...
Yeah, there was.
...the clerk was dealing with, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
But we did send it out.
Okay. So specifically, it's just breaking classifications?
That's it.
Okay, and we're going to just do it...
I mean, it's literally, it's a two-page one, two, every-page one, and it's not very cumbersome.
And it's enrollment this evening?
Enrollment, so you can still...
Okay, so I still have time?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I have no problems. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action, second. Clerk, go read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Markesi?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be nine, excuse me, eight yays, zero nays.
You've passed.
Just very briefly, just so you know, all of the changes that you have made, and we've done, and for the city council's office, is going to generate close to 7, $6,000 to $700,000 in revenue. So that free cash number from my office alone will increase from 330,000 to 600,000 or plus. So the people that are utilizing my office are going to be paying for themselves rather than burdening the taxpayers, just so you know.
Clerk, go read item number 19.
Item number 19. Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, an order adopting a moratorium on newsrecks.
Favorable action? The motion for favorable action's been seconded. Clerk, go read the roll.
Do we have anything on there about newsrecks?
Yes, we have a very...
I think we put it on there once.
Very confusing ordinance that tells the director to issue a permit, but doesn't say what director issues the permit. So, so we need to immediately, for six months, just, I'm going to go back and rewrite it, but I need, we want to stop them for now, and that's why we're rewriting it, just so you know the intent of this. Okay? This is a six-month moratorium, I want, I did want to make sure we stated that. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Markesi?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed item number 19. Clerk, go read item number 20.
Item number 20.
Anthony?
Is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president, in order to transfer $44,000 from the DPW executive salary account, and $32,000 from the ISD salary account, into the following accounts. Solicitous salaries, $29,000. Human resources salaries, $15,000. And health and wellness salaries, $32,000. For a total of $76,000.
Counsel?
No, this has been before us.[1488.12]